We don't, we're not really sure what's going on with that property because a lot of times what happens is people will come and say they're working on the property. We don't have any building permits for that property or anything that works being done. And that's why it's on the list. But, you know, we can discuss it on whether or not the council wants to leave it on the list. I mean, it would, we can, so if we submit this list to the state, we can take it off.
Right.
Or, or it just gets placed at the bottom. If we find out additional information, like, I mean, sometimes, as Mark said earlier, it's a, to me, it's a good incentive sometimes for, for people to, you know, start working on the house.
Yeah, sure. All right. Do any councilors have any questions or comments? Councilor Zephyr?
Thank you. Is there any harm leaving it on the list? I mean, I know that the guy protested or, or just indicated that he was doing work, but is, but if you left it on the list, is there any harm in doing that?
No, because it's, it's, I mean, this list isn't, we're not saying we're going to come and demo the properties or, or immediately take them over. So there's no harm in leaving. It's really, it's really incentive for the community to leave it on the list to make sure that work gets done, or if work is not getting done, then we can proceed with it.
And if it's taken off the list, Wendy, can it be added back?
Uh, no.
For this first round?
No. Once it's taken off the list, you'd have to wait and do the, all the hearings and all the communities again. So next year, we'll come back before you with an additional, we may come back before you with an additional set of properties, but sort of a once-a-year type exercise.
Proposal. Okay. All righty, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other councillor? Councillor Cormier?
Just as an FYI, the, the property at 146 Third Street, I happened to go by there this week, and there's all kinds of work being done there now, so.
Okay. One, that property has been one of the most troublesome properties, so I would say we'd want to leave that on the list because that's been fire, police department, across the board, on, so.
I agree.
But I appreciate that.
I just wanted to bring it up that they are, they do have a dumpster out there, they have a crane delivering, uh, I, I, I don't know if it was a roof or what they had delivering in this week, so at least it's...
Okay. Good.
So if there was any other property that was out there that were in question, that might be a slot to slip that one in instead of the Third Street.
Okay. Anyone else? If not, I'll open it up to members of the public. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to address the council relative to this hearing? Second time, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council either in favor of or against this particular petition? Third and final time, does any member of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Going back to the council, at least from my perspective on legal affairs, I would vote to approve the application as it, as it stands now without amendment. Councillor Frida, I don't know your position.
I agree with that.
Councillor Bananza?
I am also in accord.
Okay. Mr. President?
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mark, Wendy will probably be in touch with you tomorrow in a vote taken later this evening.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Do I need to stay for the...
No. No, don't worry about it.
Yeah.
Hi. Nice call.
Okay.
It's Legal Affairs, right?
Legal Affairs? Okay. This is a hearing before the Lemonster City Council. This is petition eight dash nineteen. Gil P. Feckley and Susan Chalifoe Zephyr request to reduce the speed limit on Burridge Avenue from Main Street to Pierce Street to 25 miles per hour. Initially, I'll go to members of Legal Affairs. If they have any questions or comments, Councillor Frida?
No.
Okay. And Councillor Bananza?
I support it as well.
All right. Any, any other members of the city council have any comments or questions?
No.
No? Okay. Is there any member of the audience who wishes to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Second time, does any member of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Third and final time, does any member of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Mr. President, seeing none, I'd move to close the public hearing, and we have a unanimous recommendation from Legal Affairs.
Thank you.
We'll present later.
Thank you. Public Service, next. Withdrawn. Claim no.[344.03]
They need to do it and they couldn't be bothered to wait for anybody to go through the proper channels, which sometimes are cumbersome and takes some time, but they just did it that way. I don't know why, you'd have to speak to them, but got themselves in trouble. So if you'd like to speak about that further, I'll make myself available this evening and it's up to you. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Greg. Appreciate it.
Your time.
Would any other member of the audience like to address the council? Second call, third and final call. If not, the public forum is closed. Ladies and gentlemen, the regular scheduled meeting for the City Council, October 9th, 2018, is now in session. Please stand and join me in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll now take a roll call vote, beginning with Councilor David Cormier.
Present.
Councilor Pauline Cormier.
Present.
Councilor Odenger.
Present.
Councilor Bonanza.
Present.
Councilor Feckley.
Present.
Councilor Shalfo Zephyr.
Present.
Councilor Dobrowski.
Present.
Councilor Frida.
Present.
All nine members are present. Is the chairwoman of records ready to report?
Mr. President, I do have the minutes of the special meeting of July 19th, the regular meeting of July 23rd, and the regular meeting of August 13th. However, I just received them this evening and again, there were quite a few votes and I would like to be able to review them.
Good idea.
I also, at the last meeting, indicated that I needed to review the minutes of July 9th and I did so with the city clerk and she's making some amendments. So I would assume that we will get them at the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you very much for looking into that.
You're welcome.
We'll begin with communications from the mayor, beginning with Communication 19, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Council President. Communication C-19, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests that the City Council approve petition C-19 and authorize the mayor, on behalf of the city, to petition the Massachusetts General Court for special legislation substantially in the form as set forth below relating to the city making payment on a certain unpaid bill to Royal Steam Heater Co. in the amount of $60,105.12, provided however, that the General Court may make clerical or editorial changes of form only to the bill unless the mayor approves amendments to the bill before enactment by the General Court and provided further that the mayor is hereby authorized to approve amendments which shall be within the scope of the general public objectives of this petition.
Communication 19 is referred to the Chairman of Legal Affairs.
Regular course.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And for clarification, the reason why this is before us, again, we needed to know the exact number for the, for the House of Representatives at this point, okay? We'll now move on to petitions, beginning with 13-19.
13-19, Richard M. Marshand, Festival Facilitator, requests the closure of the following streets, 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. for the annual Johnny Appleseed Arts and Cultural Festival on Saturday, September 21st, 2019, with a rain date of Saturday, September 28th, 2019. West Street from School Street to Main Street, Park Street from West Street intersection in the Church Street vicinity to Main Street, the City Hall parking lot, the city parking lot adjacent to the City Hall located off West Street, the sitting parking lot defined spaces located between the First Baptist Church and the First Church Unitarian for handicap parking, Church Street from Marion Avenue to West Street. The section of Church Street to be closed off is still available with an altered egress pattern for public safety vehicles and business.
This petition is referred to the Chairman of City Property.
Mr. Chairman, regular course.
Thank you, regular course. We'll now move on to 14-19.
14-19, National Grid, to install one singular own pole on West Street, beginning at a point approximately 40 feet southeast of the center line of the intersection of Hillary Road and continuing approximately 15 feet in the northeast direction. National Grid to install one pole with an anchor and guide to service house number 845. The current service goes over the roof of the home and is no longer in code.
14-19 is referred to the Chairwoman of Public Service.
Thank you, Mr. President. We give it, we've, regular course, but there's been a request to withdraw it. So...
Not this one. The next one.
The next one. Okay. I'm sorry. Okay.
That's okay.
So the recommendation is, regular course.
Okay. We're going to establish the hearing? Okay. So we'll establish a hearing also. We're at the end of that paragraph. It's going to be 10:22 at 6:25 p.m. Okay?
10:22 at 6:05?
6:25 p.m.
6:25. Okay.
All right. Thank you. Council needs to establish the public hearing. All those in favor of establishing that public hearing, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, the hearing's been scheduled in regular course. Thank you. We now move on to 15-19.
Horgin Construction, Inc., to accept, lay out, and dedicate Nass Farm Road as a public way.
15-19 is referred to the Chairman of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular course, with referrals to the Department of Public Works in the Planning Department.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. 15-19 has been given a regular course with referral to the DPW and Planning Department. Thank you. We'll now move on to matters before the City Council. Before we move into the financial report, we're going to pause for a moment and deal with 10-19. I yield the floor to the Chairman of Legal Affairs for a recommendation by committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Petition 10-19, new view liabilities to assets. We had a brief public hearing this evening. The unanimous recommendation of Legal Affairs is to grant petition 10-19.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Council served the recommendation right to grant 10-19. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, this will be a roll call vote beginning with Council Frida.
Yay.
Council Dobrowski.
Yay.
Council Shalfo Zephyr.
Yay.
Council Feckley.
Yay.
Council Bonanza.
Yay.
Council Odenger.
Yay.
Council Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Council David Cormier.
Yay.
I shall record as yay by a vote of nine to nothing. Petition 10-19 has been granted. Wendy, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move back to the regular process here. We're going to deal with the financial report. Is the chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Thank you. We began the fiscal year on July 1 with a balance and stabilization account of $15,113,865. We added a transfer to the stabilization account of $4 million plus interest earnings of $19,420, making for a balance of 4,000, I mean, $4,019,420. Since that time, we've approved the six appropriations totaling $797,000, leaving an ultimate balance in the stabilization fund currently of $18,336,285.
Thank you very much for that report. We'll now move on to Communication 18. Is the chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. C-18, relative to the appropriation of $455,000 to be made to the debt service principal expense account, same to be raised by fiscal year 2019 revenue. This is regarding National Grid rebate in the amount of $223,000 and MAPC rebate in the amount of $232,000 totaling $455,000. Direct the council to our previous bond authorization in the amount of $1.5 million to fund the conversion of streetlights to the LED program. Fortunately for us, that was a guesstimate of what the cost for the conversion would be. It turns out that the actual conversion cost much closer to about $1.1 million. These rebate funds were derived from the conversion to LED and the money is being applied to the $1.1 million balance that was created by that LED conversion. The city will go out to short-term borrowing, ultimately to fund the difference, the 1.1 million dollars less the 1 point, less the $455,000 of rebates. I am told that the savings with respect to the LED lights versus the prior conventional lights are about $300,000 of the $400,000 budget annually. So the city's aim is to apply those savings which are contained in the, structurally in the budget that we have right now, to apply to the debt service in the coming two fiscal years. So we will never go out the permanent bond, which saves us costs because of course the permanent bond costs much money, much more money. And this will be taken care of both with internal borrowing and short-term borrowing.
Thank you very much.
So it'd be my recommendation to approve C-18.
Thank you. Council served the recommendation right to grant Communication 18. Are there any comments or questions on the floor?
We don't have a, we don't have a committee.
To the subcommittee? Okay. I'll yield the floor to the clerk. Councilor, do you remember? Council Cormier?
I also agree. I think this is very good for the city, so.
Okay. All right. Mr. Chairman?
So the unanimous recommendation, Mr. President, is to grant C-18.
Thank you. Council served the recommendation right to grant Communication 18. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to nothing, the communication has been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Ordered that the sum of $455,000 be appropriated to the debt service principal expense account, same to be raised by fiscal year 2019 revenue, including rebates from National Grid in the amount of $223,000 and MAPC in the amount of $232,000. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Council served that recommendation right. Again, are there any comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yay.
Yay.
Those opposed by a vote of nine to nothing, the order's been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move on to Legal Affairs, beginning with 41-18. Is the chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Petition 41-18, Kristen Kelly, Planning Director, amend Article 11, Section 22-60 of the Lomister zoning ordinance to add language requiring deep observation hole testing for stormwater infiltration/detention areas. The deep hole testing shall be performed by a Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection certified soil evaluator. This is a matter where, due to Kristen Kelly leaving the office, this petition got delayed. Council's required to hold another public hearing because 90 days have elapsed since the last public hearing. So we have a public hearing scheduled for November 13, 2018, at 7 o'clock p.m. So my recommendation is further time. And I'd also just make sure that the planning board, if we can just make sure that the planning board is holding their hearing as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council served the recommendation right for further time on 41-18. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of their recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to nothing, further time has been awarded. Thank you.
Mr. President, I just need to recuse myself from the next one.
No problem. We're going to deal with 39-19. I'll yield the floor to the clerk, Council Frida.
39-18, Prime Wellness Centers, creating a special permit to build a medical marijuana cultivation facility located at 1771 Lock Drive. Recommendation will be further time. We have a hearing set for October 22nd at 6:30.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of eight to nothing, further time has been awarded to 39-18 and the hearing will be opened up again on 10:22 at 6:30 p.m. in the council chambers. Thank you. We'll now move on to 8-19. Is the chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Petition 8-19, Gail P. Feckley and Susan Shalfo Zephyr, request to reduce the speed limit on Burrage Avenue from Main Street to Pierce Street to 25 miles per hour. We had a public hearing earlier this evening and at that time, the recommendation of Legal Affairs was to grant petition 8-19 and it was unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Council served that recommendation right to grant 8-19. Are there any comments on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to nothing, the communication has been granted. Do I need a roll call on that? Does this ordinance change? Okay. We're going to go back. I'm going to do a roll call vote on that. It is an ordinance change, all right? Beginning with, so all those in favor will indicate in the usual manner. Council David Cormier.
Yay.
Council Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Council Odenger.
Yay.
Council Bonanza.
Yay.
Council Feckley.
Yay.
Council Shalfo Zephyr.
Yay.
Council Dobrowski.
Yay.
Council Frida.
Yay.
I shall record as yay by a vote of nine to nothing. 8-19 has been granted. Thank you. We'll now move on to public safety. Is the chairwoman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. 12-19, National Grid, install one singular own pole on Church Street, beginning at a point approximately 15 feet in an east direction. There's been a request by the petitioner to withdraw the petition. So the recommendation is leave to withdraw without prejudice.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Council served the recommendation right for leave to withdraw on 12-19. Are there any comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of their recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to nothing, leave to withdraw without prejudice has been granted to 12-19. We'll now move on to old business. Is there any old business before the council? If not, we'll move on to new business. I have one item on an address before we get into the first reading of the ordinance. Coming to the meeting tonight, I was thinking of an issue that took place up in Ward Four this, actually Five this weekend, and I just wanted to share with the council. I'd like to request a motion on the floor to bring National Grid down here for an informational meeting. I will tailor the questions for them and obviously, any councils that have any other issues, they would like to also add to it if they can. This Saturday, where SAT is Lomister High School, it's a regional SAT. There are kids coming in from all over the area. Also, there's a business that heavily relies upon Columbus Day weekend where that individual and his family make their money literally for the year. That's their day. That's their weekend. And National Grid came in and they shut down the road without telling a soul. No one knew what was going on. The kids were trying to get up to the high school. They couldn't get up there because the MapQuest and all the rest were trying to send them through that roadblock. In the meantime, the road was shut down, holes were dug. It was a disaster. And finally, the mayor went up there and shut them down. So thank God, some of it was salvaged, but the damage was done. That was the key. And if the mayor was not available at the time, it was a big problem. There was, there would be a huge financial hardship. But also with the kids taking the SATs, you can imagine what the impact that has. You can't be late. You cannot walk in late. It's as simple as that. And there are some kids that were taking them from Lomister for the first time that are using those test scores to be able to apply for college in the next month or so. So this is pretty significant. And quite frankly, I am sick of their attitude because I hear it all over town. They just come and go as they please. They left bags of rubbish on the corner of Orchard and West to the point where they got covered with snow. And what happened was it was rubbish and we threw, again, through the mayor's office, you know, they were able to get someone up there and we thought it was all kinds of construction material for when they did the gas line. And they picked up the bags and walked away. They had the whole thing shut down. It was just absolutely unacceptable. So, you know, besides the mess that they're making in the roads and the act of Congress that it takes to get something fixed. So what I'd like to do is have a friendly conversation with National Grid down here and see what their protocols are and share some of our frustrations with them regarding their inability to communicate with neighborhoods in a timely fashion and get the feedback necessary to prevent something like this from happening. So I'll entertain a motion on the floor to bring them down. Council Frida, any comments on that?
As a matter of fact, you took my suggestion because I wanted to have them come in, not originally to be non-judgmental, but...
Right.
We'll be judgmental now, maybe, to have a discussion about potential gas, what, explain to the public what overpressurization is. A lot of people asking questions. And so I absolutely agree. And as long as we can have all these issues addressed at the same time.
Right. We had a gas problem with the JE festival. It was significant. And I mean, Nelson Street, how long did it take us to get that road fixed? And we would go up there, the fryer pump was up there several times, sometimes in a day, never mind in a week. And it's like, you know, the levels of emission are acceptable. What's a tipping point when you throw a match down? You know, it's just horrible. So I think that, you know, in light of everything that's happening right now in the Commonwealth, it's coming to the world's attention. You know, we need to get a handle on some things. But in addition to the inconvenience of what happens and how it impacts a neighborhood, also, you know, with the protocols on that as well. Okay? So any other comments on that? All right. Do I have a motion on the floor to bring them down?
No.
Council Frida, second.
Second.
Council David Cormier. All those in favor? Those opposed? Thank you. So if anyone has a question that you think of tomorrow, please send it to the clerk and the assistant clerk and we'll send a friendly letter to them to bring them down here. Okay? The meeting that I'd like to see is to give them some time to do this would be November 13th at 6:45 p.m. in the council chambers. So there's plenty of time for them to prepare and put representatives together. All right? Thank you. Any other items on the new business? Okay. We'll move on to the ordinance. I yield the floor to the Chairman of Legal Affairs. We had discussion, went back and forth today on whether this has to be written in its entirety or not. I'll leave that up to your discretion at this point.
I think there were enough changes in the ordinance that it probably should be written in its entirety.
Okay. Thank you.
So just read it.
Thank you.
Unfortunately for me. So this is a first reading of an ordinance, amending Chapter 20 of the revised ordinance entitled Streets and Sidewalks. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Lomister as follows. Section 20-10 of the revised ordinance entitled Parades, Processions, and Assemblies is hereby amended, rescinding the current text in its entirety and by inserting in its place the following. Section 20-10, Parades, Races. 2010A Definitions, Chief of Police is the current chief of the Lomister Police Department or their designee. Downtown area is the area bounded by the following intersections. Main Street at Columbia Street, Mechanic Street at Water Street, Lancaster Street at Central Street, Central Street at Union Street, Union Street at Adams Street... Street, Central Street at Union Street, Union Street at Adams Street, Pleasant Street at Pearl Street, West Street at School Street, Merriam Ave at School Street. Parade is any parade, march, or procession in or upon any street except the sidewalks thereof. Race is any organized competition of speed and endurance. It shall include but not be limited to bicycle races, foot races, marathons, and jogging events. Twenty dash ten B, Exceptions. This chapter shall not apply to A, funeral processions; B, governmental agency acting within the scope of its functions. Twenty dash ten C, Permit Required. No person shall engage in, participate in, aid, form, or start any parade or race unless a parade slash race permit therefore shall have been obtained from the Chief of Police. Twenty dash ten D, Application for Permit. A, A person seeking issuance of a parade race permit shall file an application with the Chief of Police on forms provided by such office. The application must be filled out in its entirety to be accepted. B, The parade race application fee shall be twenty-five dollars payable to the City of Lamonster. This fee is nonrefundable. C, To ensure an orderly approval process, parade race permit application should be filed as soon as possible in advance of the parade or race. In any case, permit applications must be filed not less than five business days before the date on which the parade race is proposed to take place. Failure to timely file may be grounds for denial of the permit. D, The application will be examined by the Traffic Department. The Traffic Department will then make an approval slash deny recommendation to the Chief of Police. E, Once a decision is made by the Chief of Police, a meeting will be scheduled between the Traffic Department and the parade race organizers. The purpose of this meeting will be to explain the requirements of the permit, including but not limited to required changes to the parade race route, street closures, and if detail officers are required. If the parade race organizers agree to the permit requirements, the permit shall be issued. Twenty dash ten E, Content of Application. The application for the parade race permit shall set forth the following information. A, If the parade race is proposed to be conducted for, on behalf of, or by, an organization, the name, address, and telephone number of the headquarters of the organization and the authorized and responsible heads of such organization. B, The name, address, and telephone numbers, daytime and nighttime, of the person who will be the parade race coordinator and who will be responsible for its conduct. C, The date when the parade race is to be conducted. D, The details of the proposed route requested, the starting point and the termination point. E, The approximate number of persons who, in animals and vehicles which will constitute such parade race, the type of animals, and description of the vehicles. F, The hours when such desired parade slash race will assemble, start, and terminate. G, A statement as to whether the parade slash race would occupy all or only a portion of the width of the streets proposed to be traversed. H, The desired location by streets of any assembly areas for such parade slash race. I, The time at which units of the parade slash race will begin to assemble at such assembly area or areas. J, The maximum interval of space to be maintained between units of such parade slash race. K, If the parade slash race is designed to be held by and on behalf of or for any person other than the applicant, the applicant for such permit shall file with the Office of the Chief of Police a communication in writing from the person proposing to hold the parade slash race, authorizing the applicant to apply for the permit on behalf of the person proposing to hold the parade slash race. L, Whether any alcoholic or beer beverages will be consumed in conjunction with the parade slash race at the staging area prior to the parade race slash race or at the terminus of the parade slash race. And if any alcoholic or beer beverages will be served, that all necessary permits have been obtained from the appropriate authorities. M, The estimated number of participants in the most previous year. N, A description of the type of non-permanent markings or signs which shall be used and removed upon completion of the parade slash race. Permanent marking of any type, including painted symbols on street pavement, are strictly prohibited. O, Such other information as the Chief of Police shall find necessary to the enforcement of this chapter. Twenty dash ten F, Downtown Area Restrictions slash Requirements. A, Any parade slash race that will take place in or pass through the downtown area will require a police detail. The amount of detail officers will be determined by the Chief of Police or their designee. The number of detail officers required will be determined by the need to ensure the safety of the general public, parade slash race participants, and required street closures. B, The parade slash race organizers shall notify all occupants and building managers of property abutting the parade slash race route by leaflet at least forty-eight hours, but not more than seven days before the parade slash race. C, The leaflet shall briefly describe the nature of the parade slash race, shall identify the name and telephone number of the parade slash race organizer, and the date and time of the parade slash race. Shall contain a map of the route and shall describe all restrictions upon traffic and parking on or crossing the parade route. D, The parade slash race organizers shall be required to install any temporary no parking signs that the police traffic department determine are necessary for the duration of the parade slash race. E, The parade slash race organizers will be required to contact the Montessehuset Regional Transportation Agency. Mart, To advise Mart of any street closures that will disrupt bus routes. The parade slash race organizer will need to designate alternate bus stop locations for the time of the parade slash race. Twenty dash ten G, Permit Issuance or Denial. The Chief of Police shall issue a permit if the application conditions are met. However, the Chief of Police shall deny the application for such a permit if, from a consideration of the application and from such other information as may otherwise be obtained, the Chief of Police finds any of the following. A, The conduct of the parade slash race will substantially interrupt the safety, the safe and orderly movement of other traffic contiguous to its route, or will interfere with street maintenance or other legally permitted events. B, The concentration of persons, animals, and vehicles at assembly points of the parade slash race will unduly interfere with proper fire and police protection of or ambulance service to areas contiguous to such assembly areas. C, The conduct of such parade slash race will interfere with the movement of firefighting equipment or emergency vehicles en route to a fire or emergency. D, The parade slash race is not scheduled to move from its point of origin and to its point of termination expeditiously and without unreasonable delays. E, The parade is to be held for the sole purpose of advertising any product or goods and is designed to be held purely for private profit. F, The parade slash race organizer has not paid the application fee. Twenty dash ten H, Time for Action on Application, Notice of Denial, and Issuance Notice of Protest. Number one, The Chief of Police shall grant or deny an application within the following time periods. A, For all parade slash race permit applications filed five or more business days before the event, within five business days after the receipt of the application, but in any case not less than three calendar days prior to the event. B, For parade slash race permit applications filed within five business days of the event, at least twenty-four hours prior to the event. Number two, Notice of Decision to the Applicant and Judicial Review. A, The Chief of Police shall notify the applicant of the decision to grant or deny the application within the time for action specified in section twenty dash ten H one. If the Chief of Police denies the application, the Chief of Police shall deliver to the applicant within the time for action specified in section twenty dash ten one, a written notice of the action stating the reasons for the denial of the permit. The decision of the Chief of Police shall be final. Ten dash ten I, Notice of Permit to Officials. Immediately upon the issuance of a parade slash race permit, the Chief of Police shall send a copy thereof to the mayor, fire chief, and the Department of Public Works. Twenty dash ten L, Public Conduct During Parades. A, Interference. No person shall unreasonably hamper, obstruct, or impede, or interfere with any parade slash race or parade slash race assembly, or with any person, vehicle, or animal participating, excuse me, participating or used in a parade slash race. B, Driving Through Parades slash Races. No driver or vehicle except police, fire, and ambulance vehicles, unless so directed by a police officer, shall drive between the vehicles or persons comprising a parade when such vehicles or persons are in motion and are conspicuously designated as a parade slash race. C, Parking on Parade slash Race Route. The Chief of Police shall have the authority, when reasonably necessary, to prohibit or restrict the parking of vehicles along a street or highway or part thereof constituting a part of the route of a parade slash race. The parade slash race organizer shall post signs to such effect, as directed by the police department, and it shall be unlawful for any person to park or leave unattended any vehicle in violation thereof. If the police department determines a vehicle on the parade slash race route must be removed, the vehicle may be towed from the parade slash race route at the owner's expense. No person shall be liable for parking in violation of this chapter on a street not so posted. D, Penalty. Any person convicted of violating any of the provisions of this chapter shall be punished by a fine not exceeding one hundred dollars for the second and subsequent offenses. Twenty dash ten M, Revocation of Permit. Whenever any parade slash race shall depart from or is conducted in a manner substantially different from that indicated in the application, including the lack of adequate traffic control therefore, such parade slash race shall be in violation of this chapter, and any permit pursuant to which it is purportedly conducted shall be deemed to be automatically revoked, and the parade slash race shall be immediately terminated. This provision will be invoked when the permitee either violates the terms of the permit or refuses to conform to the terms of the permit after advised to do so by the police. Petition, this is petition four dash nineteen.
One typo on there. Did you catch it?
I thought, actually caught, caught a few, yeah.
If you can bring those to the attention of the clerk.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The question I have is, if there is a second reading?
One second, please. Okay, so, help me to page, gave us a clean copy. Server went down, so they had to hand type it, so we weren't able to pass the file on to the agenda. So, if you can just accept the clean copy the way it is, isn't the type, there shouldn't be any typos in it.
Okay.
Okay? I'm sorry. I'll yield the floor back to you.
This was just the first reading of the ordinance. So, if anyone has any proposed changes, I know, you know, myself, I noticed there was a couple of tight deadlines in there, but if anyone has proposed changes, we can bring it up at the second reading, give people a chance to digest this between now and then.
Yeah.
But I'll go to my committee first.
Okay. You'll the floor, Counsel Frida?
We haven't had a Legal Affairs Committee meeting to discuss any of this. There's some important issues in here that aren't clear to me.
Yeah.
I know they're saying government, government entities, but we had the kids march from this high school to City Hall. What does that fall under? Good Friday, you have processions from some of the churches. What does that fall? I think there are a lot of questions. I think it needs more discussion. I don't necessarily oppose it, but I think we need to have a little more clarity to it.
Well, I'm happy to have a, a public hearing. I just, I think my question is whether we have the public hearing between now and the second, not public hearing, subcommittee meeting, between now and the second reading of the ordinance, and continue to go forward with this, or give this further time at this point. I think that's my question for the committee.
Okay. Counsel Frida?
I would give it further time.
Okay.
You'll the floor to the third member, Counsel Bonanza?
I'm okay with that.
Further time.
That's fine with me.
Okay. So, the recommendation from committee on the
Recommendation from the committee on the first reading is further time, and I think we probably should schedule a subcommittee meeting now, and I would just ask other members of the council, if they see anything in there that they want to change or that they have questions about, just to, you know, you know, send me some questions or modifications or what have you.
Okay. Do you know when you're gonna establish that subcommittee meeting? We're doing on, the twenty-second is our next regular scheduled meeting.
All right, so why don't we? Let me see what we got going on.
We'll find out. And also, if the committee wishes to have any representation from the police department as well. City clerk brings up a good point.
How's Tuesday, October sixteenth look?
What time?
I can't do that date.
You can't do that date? Monday, the fifteenth?
I can do that.
I can do that.
Okay.
Want to say?
What time?
I'd, I'd say five-thirty, but, you know, I'm open to whatever works for everybody.
Really is a better.
Five-thirty?
Five-thirty's okay.
Five-thirty's good.
Okay, so, further time is the recommendation on the first reading of the ordinance.
Yeah.
With the subcommittee meeting to be established on the fifteenth, Monday, October fifteenth.
Yeah.
At five-thirty P.M. in the council chambers.
I'd even go five. I think the Patriots are playing that night.
Five works for me.
Five o'clock, Counsel Frida?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, did you want to invite anyone down from the police department for that meeting?
I think the, the police chief, I know he submitted this, and
Okay.
I know he's concerned because races are becoming more and more popular.
There's one Saturday.
Yeah.
You know? So, if I can, the chief or representative for the chief, just in case he's not available.
Sure, that's fine.
All right? Counsel Frida?
I think my biggest concern is the freedom of speech issue, how it conflicts with, with some of the, some of the comments in here. I think we need to be pretty clear with it.
Just to echo that, there may be some, I guess constitutional rights
Right.
that are in question, and if you have that, if you have those questions, if you pass them to the clerk, we might be able to streamline this, to get them to the city solicitor for an opinion before that meeting.
I don't have them.
If you do.
I was thinking of it while we were reading it, that there'd be questions that come up with some of the things that have been done in the study.
Well, just that question in general, we can ask the city solicitor if the committee wishes.
Sure.
Okay? Okay, all set?
All set.
Okay. Counselor, sir, the recommendation read again for further time on the first reading of the ordinance, and to establish a subcommittee meeting on October fifteenth, which is a Monday, at five o'clock P.M. in the council chambers. We'd also like to vote to bring the chief, who is the petitioner, or a representative that he selects to come to that subcommittee meeting on the fifteenth. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation for further time, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to nothing, further time has been awarded. Thank you very much. We now have the first reading of an ordinance, Motor Vehicles and Traffic. Is the chairman ready to report?
Yeah, Mr. President, first reading of an ordinance. This is an ordinance amending chapter thirteen of the revised ordinances entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic. Be it ordained by the City Council of Lamonster as follows. Section thirteen dash eighty-eight dot four of the revised ordinance entitled Left Turn Restriction is hereby amended by adding the following text. No driver shall make a left-hand turn from Day Street onto the rear driveway of Johnny Appleseed School during the hours of seven A.M. to nine A.M., Monday through Friday during the school year. This was formerly petition eighty-six dash eighteen. Mr. President, my recommendation is to adopt the first reading of the ordinance. I'd ask you to poll my committee.
I'll yield the floor to the clerk.
I agree.
Third member?
I agree.
Mr. Chairman, please qualify.
The unanimous recommendation of Legal Affairs, Mr. President, is to adopt the first reading of the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, sir, the recommendation read to adopt the first reading of the ordinance, formerly petition eighty-six dash eighteen. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? Counsel Feckley?
Mr. President, as you know, I was the petitioner on this request.
Mr. President, as you know, I was the petitioner on this request, and I believe that we made a amendment to the petition in, with the wishes of the principal of Johnny Appleseed School, indicating that she would prefer the following times, seven-thirty AM to eight-thirty AM and two-thirty PM to three-thirty PM.
I believe you're right. Let's double-check on that.
I did submit that to the city solicitor, but this is still what I got back from the city solicitor.
Okay, so, we're going to go back to the question that you raised, because that's significant.
Yeah.
So, I'm going to ask for consideration on amending that, again, if necessary, because this is the reading before us right now.
Well, this is the first reading of the ordinance. I think we can amend it next time, and it's school started, so just so we don't slow this down.
Okay.
I think I would just push forward at this point.
All right, I'm just wondering if maybe the city solicitor responded to the original petition and not the amended version.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, so, thanks for bringing that point up, Council, it's excellent. We'll get that nailed down. So, we also are going to establish a public hearing, correct? Mr. Chairman, do you have that?
I don't have that. If I could just get a suggested time from the clerk.
Go ahead.
Eleven thirteen at six-twenty.
We're bringing national grid down.
It's at six-twenty-five.
Yeah, we should, plenty of time for that. That's a quick one.
Yeah, so we have one at six-twenty-five, first please.
Okay, perfect. Do you have that, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I'd asked, I'd asked that the, I think the recommendation is to adopt the first reading of the ordinance. There is an understanding that there's a likely amendment, and to establish a hearing on the second reading of the ordinance for November thirteenth at six-twenty PM.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Council Feckley, you all set with that?
Yeah, fine.
Okay, very good. Councilor, the recommendation read to move forward and adopt the first reading of the ordinance, anticipating an amendment at the second reading, and to establish a hearing on eleven thirteen at six-twenty PM in the council chambers. Are there any further questions or comments? If not, this would be a roll call vote, beginning with Council David Cormier.
Yay.
Council Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Council Ottinger.
Yay.
Council Bonanza.
Yay.
Council Feckley.
Yay.
Council Sheller Foziffer.
Yay.
Council Dobrowski.
Yay.
Council Freedom.
Yay.
I shall record a jay by a vote of nine to nothing. The first reading of the ordinance has been adopted, thank you. We now move on to the next first reading. Is the chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. First reading of an ordinance, an ordinance amending Chapter two, Article three, Section two dash sixteen of the revised ordinance entitled Regular Meetings. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Leominster as follows. Section two dash sixteen, Regular Meetings. Except as hereinafter stated, regular meetings of the City Council shall be held on the second and fourth Monday evenings of each month at seven o'clock PM. Whenever a meeting falls on a legal holiday, it shall be held the following night at the same time. Whenever a meeting falls on the evening before New Year's Day, it shall be held on the next night following the holiday at the same time. No meeting shall be held during the week of Christmas. This is formerly petition seven dash nineteen. My recommendation is to adopt the first reading of the ordinance. I'd ask you to poll the committee.
Council Freedom?
I agree.
Third member, Council Bonanza?
I agree.
Thank you, please qualify.
Mr. President, unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee is to adopt the first reading of the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilor, the recommendation read to adopt the first reading of the ordinance. Are there any comments or questions on the floor?
I just, if we could get a suggested--
Go ahead.
--meeting date, so, should we go with November thirteenth at six-fifteen?
We actually had a public hearing for this one already.
Oh, we did? Which one, what do we have?
That was actually at our last meeting. We have a public hearing.
Oh, we don't have a public hearing on the second reading?
No, just once.
No, just one?
Okay.
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 Sorry about that.
So, the way this would be in effect also, for clarification, is if this was adopted at the next meeting, there's a twenty-day appeal period according to the clerk, and then what would happen, we'd go into effect after that. So we'd be looking at probably a December meeting where the shift would take place. And then it'd be public notice, we'll make sure people know. Council Freedom?
Just a note, if we had this in place tonight, we'd be home for the first pitch.
Yeah.
That's the plan.
I know. Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay, this would be a roll call vote, beginning with Council Freedom.
Yay.
And Council Dobrowski.
Yay.
Council Sheller Foziffer.
Yay.
Council Feckley.
Yay.
Council Bonanza.
Yay.
Council Ottinger.
Yay.
Council Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Council David Cormier.
Yay.
I shall record a jay, so by a vote of nine to nothing, first reading's been adopted. Community calendar, first we'll go right to early voting schedule.
Thank you very much. This November election, it's a biennial election, so that means we have early voting. Early voting starts October twenty-second and runs through November second. In order to accommodate more voters coming out and being able to cast their vote, the city clerk's office is going to be opening with some extended hours. One of the days that is going to be extended will be October twenty-fifth, and we're going to be open from eight-thirty AM to eight PM. Another special date to keep in mind is October twenty-seventh, which is a Saturday. We're going to have eight o'clock in the morning to twelve PM hours, and then we're going to have normal business hours from there. So it will be eight to four, and then on the second Thursday of early voting, which is the twenty-fifth, it will be until five-thirty PM.
Thank you. Any questions on that? Okay, couple other items that I have. We do have a run-walk this weekend, Michael's Run, Michael Wallace. They'll be taking place up at the Eagles, they start early, so if you're interested in getting involved with that, they do a lot of great things with the issues around mental and emotional health in the area and the SHINE program as well. This Friday night, Leominster High School has finally a home game. They've had, it's been a while, and the Blue Devils will be taking on Wachusett Regional High School at seven o'clock at Doyle Field. I'd be remiss without mentioning that the following week, the game is being changed from Friday night to Saturday night. It's on the twentieth, and this is the Blue Devil Homecoming. It's the first annual homecoming day they're doing at Doyle Field. Beginning at ten o'clock, they have a freshman football game, followed by a varsity field hockey game. Then they have a girls' varsity soccer, a boys' varsity soccer, and a seven o'clock varsity football kickoff. They'll be playing Shepherd Hill. So all day long, the high school students will be down there, and there's also going to be as many as a dozen different activity clubs from the high school. For example, theater rods will be doing face painting, and there'll be a lot of really cool things happening. There'll be a grow going all day long with hot dogs and hamburgers. There'll be an inflatable Patriot Moonwalk for the little kids. There'll also be a football toss, and a lot of really nice things happening. So, pop in, patronize the kids, they're awesome, and hopefully it'll be a beautiful day weather-wise. Anything else on the community calendar? We're good? Have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Second? Good, thank you.
The Leominster City Council meeting is brought to you by the generous support of the Service Oil Company, three forty-five R Lancaster Street, Leominster, nine seven eight four six six one nine two two.